I'd like to request a motion to return to open session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to return to open session.
Motion by Mr. Woody is second by Ms. Bothwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in open session. Like to request a motion to adjourn the special meeting of October ninth, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourn.
Mr. Woody is, motion is your second?
Second.
Mr. Wicker, the second of the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now adjourned. And good evening. And good evening. I'd like to call the October ninth, 2023 meeting of Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at the Dare County Administration Building in the Manio and the time is now 5:15. Before we begin, I'd like to request a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize the following. Any Board of Commissioners here this evening? Wally, I don't have my glasses on. I'm sorry, Mr. Odom. Mr. Wally Odom, thank you, sir. Appreciate your support. Thank you. Take my glasses off so I can read, Wally. Now I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Bothwell to provide the official welcome on behalf of the board.
I'd like to welcome everyone here today. It's nice to see some new faces. We haven't had this many people in here for a while. And I missed the last meeting and I really welcome you three. It's nice to have students on board. And now we'll just have the clinch.
Turn the meeting over, excuse me, Ms. Isabel Alexander, student advisor to the board, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is to approve approval of the agenda, but before we continue, I'd like to request a motion to amend the agenda for the following reasons. To revise the personnel consent agenda as discussed in the closed session. To add new agenda items under reports and items for information as agenda item 1X dot C, the wall that heals. And to add new agenda item under new business as agenda item XI dot B, presentations of proposal for air quality testing.
Still move.
Got a motion by Mr. Woody.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of amending the agenda for the reasons requested, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been amended. Next, we need to approve the amended agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'm making that a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Twitty, thank you. Is your second?
Second.
Mr. Wicker, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment has been approved. Next, we'll move to public comment. I'll turn the meeting over to Board Attorney, Ms. Rachel Hitt. No comments? Okay, thank you so much. And now I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bassnight for announcements and we'll also hear from our student advisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Got several announcements that we're excited about tonight. October is a big month. October is National Principals Month, just so you can make a note on that. As well as this week is National School Lunch Week, so we encourage y'all to, if you get an opportunity, to go eat a school lunch. I think they're, they're doing wing, variations on wings this week, so we were talking about that today. Just October 2nd was National Custodians Day. We'll be doing something for our principals, I believe, tomorrow in our meeting. But if you get a chance to drop by the schools and just take, tell our custodians how much you appreciate what they do for us and how huge a role they play in education in Dare County, I'd appreciate that very much. You may have seen several of our schools and athletic events wearing pink recently. That's in, in honor of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And October 6th was National Coaches Day, so thank a coach. Next thing I have for announcements is a letter I just received. Actually, I've got two announcements on things that I've just received today. And want to read you this letter from Ms. Tammy Howard. She's Senior Director of Office of Accountability and Testing at NCDPI. Cohort graduation rate monitoring. The process for calculating the graduation rate was established by the U.S. Department of Education to provide parents, educators, and community members with valid data to support meaningful comparisons across states, districts, and schools. Your public school unit was selected to monitoring for the 2223 school year. And subsequently, First Flight High School received a letter requesting written evidence and documentation to verify the withdrawal of students reported in the 2223 cohort graduation rate. We would like to thank First Flight High School staff for their cooperation and timely response to that request. We would also like to compliment the school's comprehensive record-keeping practices. The reported denominator of students in the 2223 graduation cohort was confirmed. We appreciate your continued commitment to the students of North Carolina and your efforts to ensure that your graduation rate is accurate. So congratulations to Dare County as well as First Flight High School for that report. It's nice when you get something that says you did good. The second thing, or the last thing I want to talk to you about is a letter I also received today from the North Carolina Department of Labor Occupational Safety and Health Division. There was some interest in, particularly in First Flight Elementary School about the air quality in the work that we did at First Flight Elementary and First Flight Middle Schools. And this, this letter, Ian and I were talking about it this morning and he went back to his email and this letter was in his email. So, "Dear Mr. Adams, Your letter received on 10/23 concerning the above referenced complaint has been reviewed. Based on the information you provided, Occupational Safety and Health Division of North Carolina feels the case can be closed on the grounds that alleged hazardous conditions have been corrected or no longer exist. Your actions on behalf of the safety and health in the workplace are appreciated." So just confirmation from NCDPI and the Department of Labor that the work we did on First Flight Elementary and Middle School was successful. And that ends my reports tonight, and it is absolutely my pleasure to now turn the podium over to Ms. Anna Tinch to talk about some announcements at First Flight.
Good evening. To start out with Kitty Hawk Elementary School highlights, our annual carnival will be held at Kitty Hawk Elementary School on Friday, October 20th. This is a longstanding tradition coordinated by our PTO and our only fundraiser. Recently, we held our first Global Culture Day during specials all day on October 29th. Our DLI teachers shared songs, dances, traditions, artifacts, and craft activities to introduce all of our students to her home country, the Dominican Republic. At First Flight Elementary School, we started our all-new Hands-on Deck Flyer Time, where all students receive interventions in small groups based on data. TAs, counselors, interventionists, specialists, administration, senior resource officer, and teachers are all working with small groups so that all students have personalized instruction. Kindergarten through second grade flyer time is from 8:15 to 8:45, and third through fifth grade flyer time is from 10:30 to 11:00. This also allows First Flight Elementary to create groups across grade levels. First Flight Elementary has created spaces in their hallways for small groups to work. Every space at First Flight Elementary School is a learning space. At First Flight Middle School, our Teacher of the Year, Mr. John Buford, was recently diagnosed with leukemia. Our students, staff, and parents all jumped into full gear to celebrate him and raise money to support him during this difficult time. A student suggested that every Tuesday be Bowtie Tuesday and honor Mr. Buford. A parent and a staff member designed a bowtie t-shirt and were selling them to raise funds. We are also hosting a Halloween concert on October 26th at 6:00 PM with band, chorus, and strings, where we will continue to raise funds for his cause. And finally, at First Flight High School, our aviation program is off to a great start. We have seen an outpouring of support from the community as many people have come out in a volunteer mentor capacity. Homecoming Week was a successful celebration of our school and community with daily themes for students, a Powder Puff football game, homecoming parade, game, and a homecoming dance that saw over 600 students attend. I'd now like to turn it over to Ms. Sherlin Mindietta from Cape Patterson Secondary School.
Good evening. Starting off with Cape Patterson Elementary School. Thanks to Ms. Jen Augustin, our very own CHES librarian, on September 25th, Cape Patterson Elementary School hosted world-renowned author, illustrator, and Caldecott Award winner, Jason Chin. He met with our second to fifth grade students and talked with them about the writing process. His books are mostly about science and nature and wanted to visit our area to do research for his next book about hurricanes. His most recent author title, Your Place in the Universe, won the Cook Prize and was a 2020 Hornbook Fan Fair title. His book, Grand Canyon, received both a Caldecott Honor and a cyber honor and won the 2018 Orbis Pictus Award. For Cape Patterson Secondary School, I would like to congratulate our marching band on their outstanding performance at the 2023 Peanut Festival in Edenton this weekend. Our talented students, made up of middle and high school students, competed against other high schools in the region, earning the following recognitions. First place visual effect, first place general, first place music, first place percussion, second place color guard, and first place overall, Division 1A. And lastly, for the Dare Learning Academy, has had a busy start to the year with enrollment growing to 33 students currently between our three sites. We are delving into MTSS interventions at the third tier level with the Check and Connect Mentor Program and a focus on setting goals for all students through student personnel learning plans. I would like to turn it over to Ms. Isabel Alexander from Manio High.
Good evening. Nags Head Elementary School will have their annual NHES Pumpkin Fair on Saturday, October 14th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We are also having our Math Night at the Nags Head Food Lion on Thursday, October 25th, 2023, from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. We hope to see you all there. Manio Elementary School had their Rock Your School Day and it was a great student engagement day. We had teachers across all grade levels and specials transforming their classrooms in order to make a memorable experience while still teaching content. Big shout out to MMS for allowing their band to come play during student arrival. Also, we are hosting our first Family Literacy Night on October 23rd from 5:30 to 7:30. Next up, at Manio Middle School, their first Spirit Week was a major success. Student participation spirit point goals were met, so three teachers got pied in the face. Our first school improvement team meeting had nine parents attend and participate in our goal setting. This was a wonderful time of conversation with all stakeholders and look forward to a great year of parent participation. And finally, at Manio High School, Senior Katherine Tyre received recognition for outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in the fall of 2022. Homecoming Week was also a success at Manio High School. Over 300 students attended, attended the dance, which makes it one of the most, most attended and best dances we've had yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Some good, yeah, good job.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Absolutely thrilled to see. I, I just sort of want them to go back and do it again. I'm trying to write it all down as y'all are going through it and I'm missing about half of it. But thank y'all. That was just fantastic. One more update. I negated to say that the, both the pre and post-air quality tests that we did at First Flight Elementary and First Flight Middle are on our website. Anybody can go there and look at those. And if, if they're interested, go to the Dare County Schools website. Ladies, thank you for being a part of this meeting.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Twitty, thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Bothwell, second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is reports and items for information. I'll turn the meeting over to our Director of Technology, Ms. Holly King.
Good evening. Tonight we have a celebration. And so we're going to start with a really quick, let's see, update. Are we there yet? Okay.
Broadcast on these machines so we can see it better. Yeah. It's not working.
It's not?
Erin, can you look to see? Why it's not populating on their desktops?
Would you like for me to pause and?
There we go. Mine just popped up.
We're good? We're ready? Okay. So about a year ago, the Dare County Schools librarians embarked on a collective mission to create what's called a collection development plan that will drive their work for the next five years. These are, these collection development plans have an element that is district-wide, but then they also have an element that is very personalized for their stakeholders, their individual learners, and the collections that they have in their spaces. As we were having these conversations, and like I said, this has been going on for over a year, one of the things that became apparent is what does the role of a librarian look like? And at the time, it was 2022 and now we're in 2023. And that has evolved a lot since what librarians looked like when you and I were in school. And so what we wanted to make sure is the work that we do over the next five years is grounded heavily in, as you can see, these three icons, Dare County Schools' vision. We took the existing vision, recognizing that that's going to be a visioning process over the next five years. So we wanted to be very mindful of where we are, but where we might be going so that we could select our own branding that would match regardless of where we go. Secondly, we paid close attention to the portrait of a graduate, which is language that is coming down from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. And then lastly, we wanted to look at IST standards because that drives the work of the instructional technology facilitator and the librarian in the space. And so in doing that, the librarians really wanted to, to communicate to all of the learners, and I'm talking about youth as well as adult learners, what does our role look like in the space? And how can the librarians as a unit support our overall vision for? And at this point, at this, yes. We do have a librarian here to help celebrate, and so if you would, join me in celebrating with Quinn. We have a small gift for her and we thought this would be a great opportunity for a photo op. op.
We were so surprised. I just have to tell you, the librarians, and we saw, we're like, that's what we wanted. Yes, it's perfect. No, the board, please.
The board?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you, Quinn. Yeah, you guys go. Let me get out of your way.
I'm going to show you some of your stuff.
Absolutely.
Ready, one, two, three? One, two, three. Calls from above. Mom, go to behind.
Thank you. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Carrie. I think we, as a librarian team, we went back to, we don't know what we want, but we'll know it when we see it. And that was it. And so it's perfect. So don't be surprised tomorrow if on your social media feeds you see this a lot. And we're excited to be able to use it. So thank you. All right, ready for me to keep going?
Yes, ma'am. Holly's next report involves the Identikit system that you've asked about a couple of times, so I requested that she go back and sort of let you know where we are and what exactly the system does. So Holly, thank you.
Absolutely. So the Identikit system is a platform that was purchased about halfway through last year. We are at the point now where we are implementing it in our building. So what is Identikit? It is actually a visitor management system that will be housed at the front of each school system, or each school. What it does is it logs visitors when they come in with a custom check-in. So if you look at this particular setup, this is very similar to the ones that we have in each of the schools. You'll notice that it has a scanner, the screen, it's actually attached to a laptop, and then a printer associated with it. The purpose of this, from a visitor management perspective, is to enhance school safety by giving us a way to screen our visitors before they pass by the office. So it does have a screening system where it works with, it's basically a soft screen. It'll pick up individuals who are identified as sex offenders. It will also identify any individuals that we have identified as trespassing. So we can go in and manually add any individuals who are not supposed to be on our campus. And it will flag those folks. The additional specs on this is that it provides improved and immediate communication when those individuals come into the spaces. For our visitors, it will print out a badge with that individual's picture on the badge, and the badges are color-coded, so that allows a very consistent communication of visitors on our campus. And so when you're walking around campus as a classroom teacher, for instance, you'll know that those visitors have actually gone through the screening process, allow you to identify anyone who has not. So that increases our visibility. From a student perspective, it also has the ability to provide us with a way to check students in and out throughout the day. So this will reduce the time that it takes for students to check in and reduce the time it takes for students to check out. If you're using this for a tardy situation, then it will also print a tardy slip. So the receptionist doesn't have to hand-write a tardy slip. It will actually print it out on thermal paper. It also creates a record for our data managers to have, which then allows them to go in and very quickly update our student information system, which is Power School. Currently, it talks one direction from Power School to Identikit, which would mean that when you have an individual who is there to pick up a student, the only students that will populate on that screen for that individual to pick up is someone who's been identified in Power School as being allowed to pick up that student. So if I were to walk into a school system right now, I currently have no children in Derrick County Schools. If I type in my name, no student's going to populate as me being allowed to pick them up, because I'm not on any, I'm not allowed to pick up any student in Derrick County Schools. And that would be true for any of our visitors. And so if you have children in the school system, if you're on the approved pickup list, those students would populate for you, and that's all. So it's another way for our, for our receptionists to help ensure that the students, when they leave the building, they're only leaving with individuals who are approved, to pick them up. At the end of the day, it creates a report. The reports are in real time. So in the event we had an emergency situation, those reports are real-time and cloud-based. So the principal, if you had an evacuation, the principal could pull that report from the parking lot and be able to see exactly who's on their campus at any given point, including visitors, which adds a great safety feature in the event that we had an emergency situation. Our last screen is all about the reports. I apologize for the small font. Again, we just referenced that the reports are very thorough, they're date and timestamped, they're housed in the cloud, and they're also backed up on our servers. And then lastly, they are available off-campus as well, should we have an evacuation. Do you have any questions? Erin, can you get his mic?
Thank you. Can you revisit for the visitors when they log in?
Yes.
And what information is going to be shared through that process? Is that a criminal background information?
It is a soft background check. I can get you all the details on the.
Soft background, meaning?
It'll pull up sex offenders.
That's what I was going at, sex offenders, because you have to update that periodically based on the miles they live from the school.
It wouldn't matter, and it's looking.
Right, right, but I'm just saying, nationally, I mean, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction has to do that periodically.
Correct.
So I'm just saying that, so if sex offender was from Manio District trying to go to First Flight or Kitty Hawk or Hatter, it would flag that.
It would flag them. And it also, our preference is that the individual who's coming on campus scans their identification, their government-issued I.D.
Okay.
Now, we, in the event that it does a background check, not a full background check, but a soft check, and it identifies someone as a sex offender, it's going to show to the administrator. So what happens is, on a campus, if that person comes in and they're flagged, the administrators on that campus, who are identified as administrators in the platform, they receive a notification by way of text and email. They also will receive on their screen the picture of the offender, so the red flag, and they can then look and see, is this person in the red flag the same person who's standing in front of me?
And when you say the screen of the administrator, that's the person at the front desk more likely than the principal or assistant principal, because they're not normally at their office.
But they have access to it as well.
Right, right, right.
Get a notification.
Okay.
And that notification includes a hyperlink that takes them directly to the screen, because this is cloud-based, they can access it through their phone.
But the receptionist at the front office can see that as well, not just administrator?
Whoever the building principal has identified as an administrator for the platform.
Okay.
So that is the receptionist.
And I feel like that should be the receptionist at the front desk.
In every single building, it is the receptionist, the backup receptionist, which is sometimes the data manager, sometimes the finance treasurer, sometimes both, the principal, the assistant principal, sometimes the I.T.F. and the S.R.O.
Okay. I'm good with it. Thank you.
And the administrators actually get that notification, right, as a text message on their phone, no matter where they are, that, so they'll know. And we know that this does a pretty good job because Thursday?
Friday.
Friday.
No, it was Thursday.
We had a, an individual login who had a name that was similar to someone other than that person, and the administrators got notified to come down to take the picture and look at the individual and realize that that wasn't the same, same person, the same name. So now, it's going to be a change, because what that's going to mean is, when you come to pick somebody up at school, you're going to have to bring your I.D. And that's a little bit different. But, but as I've stressed to you time and time again, we have four points of emphasis, and one of those is school security. And we want to know who's picking who up and when, so we can maintain all that data. I also like the idea that a administrator can get a real-time list of who's in the building at that moment. So if we had to evacuate a school or a campus, we could go to wherever we evacuated to see, do we have everybody based on who we knew, who checked out, who had checked in before, after the start of the day?
This is great. It's not, never a perfect world, but it's always concerned me back to my previous job as Transportation Director. You know, I know we have a policy now, anyone third grade or younger has to have an adult present to release from the bus. But it's sad that we may not know who that adult is. And I don't know if there's anything out there in technology world that can tell us that, you know? But just having that information, at least an adult being there to secure that child to get off the bus and go home is wonderful. We done that years ago, but it would be nice if we could implement that in another direction in the future.
And we talk about this all the time. It's another layer.
Right.
There's not an end-all, but it's just one more, one more layer that we're trying to put up there so we know who and what and.
Have their safety.
Eventually, the platform is supposed to talk back with Power School. Right now, it's one direction. It receives data from Power School to make sure that those contact informations of people who are authorized to pick up, that that's most up-to-date. Eventually, it will talk back to Power School and be able to update attendance accordingly. And so that's going to save an enormous amount of time for our office staff.
And I'm glad you said that. When Power School has a list in, under your child's name, of these people are approved to pick my child up, and if you log in and you're not one of those people, you don't get access. And again, that's going to be a little more inconvenient for parents sending someone to pick somebody up, but at the same time, we want to know where our kids are and who they're going with. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Ms. Patricia Sullivan and Commissioner Wally Overman Ford for a presentation on The Wall That Heals. Ms. Sullivan is the Veterans Services Officer for Derrick County.
Thanks, Quinn.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Mrs. Superintendent, distinguished guests, parents, students, and other interested parties, thank you for allowing us here today to discuss The Wall That Heals with you. As it states here, the Derrick County Veterans Advisory Council, the Derrick County Board of Commissioners created the Advisory Council in respectful recognition of the service and sacrifice of all Derrick County veterans represented in all branches of the United States Military Service. The Veterans Advisory Council helps Derrick County veterans by serving as a liaison with this community in coordinating services and activities benefiting veterans and their families. And I read it because it was small font. There are several of our Veterans Advisory Council members here with us today, and if you will please stand and be recognized, Mr. Tony Imperiali and Mr. Barry Holt. As I'm sure you are aware by now, The Wall That Heals will be in Derrick County in November, just a few weeks from now, at the event site in Nags Head. It is being brought here by the Veterans Advisory Council, and it would not be possible without their efforts. Here's a short video overview of The Wall That Heals, and then Ms. Patty O'Sullivan, joining me here at the podium, will go into some more detail about it. If you please show the video.
The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund, many years ago, created a replica of the wall that travels to communities around the country that we call The Wall That Heals. This mobile replica really is about taking the names home to communities, large and small, to allow people to have that same kind of healing experience, to come and show their respect, to remember those fifty-eight thousand whose names are on the wall, as well as the 2.7 million Vietnam veterans who served who returned home. It's a chance to look back and pay their respects to those who answered the call of service to their country, especially those who made the ultimate sacrifice.
To be able to take this around to communities that may not even know anything about the wall or the war, especially for the young kids, to come out and see these things and get educated on it. People need to know what these fifty-eight thousand-plus gave their lives for, whether they want to hear about it or not, they need to know.
The experience at The Wall That Heals is, as you go from one end, in toward the center, the wall actually rises up above you so that it is taller than you are, which is one of the key design aspects of the wall in Washington. As you go down one of the walkways, the wall actually rises above you. And I think that has a psychological impact where you actually understand that there is something important here. It is so large that it creates an emotion of power, and you understand you're supposed to stop, you're supposed to think about it. And in this case, you can read the names, you can see your reflection in the wall, and you have to remember why those names are inscribed. These are people who sacrificed their lives for our country.
I get this feeling in my stomach, the pride that you see. When we went into San Dimas, the kids were all along the streets with their American flags. That always chokes me up, because I know what it is to serve this country. And we as Americans sometimes don't understand the cost of war. Hate the war all you want, but don't hate the warrior.
I met a couple of guys here this morning, and one guy, I walked up to him, and he started crying already. Man, it makes me feel good, not that he's crying, but that he's here to have bonding with someone and being able to find his buddy on the wall. It means so much.
We hope that you will be interested in having school participation in this event, both as the escort for The Wall arrives and as school group visitation to the wall itself. It is a recognition of an historical event in the history of our country and should be seen and understood by our children too young to remember it. Again, thank you for letting us present this to you today. It is now my pleasure to introduce you to Ms. Patty O'Sullivan, who is our Derrick County Veterans Services Officer.
Good evening. I'm Patty O'Sullivan. I'm here on behalf of the Derrick County Veterans Advisory Council to let you know that out of over a hundred applications, Derrick County was one of thirty-two to be selected to host The Wall That Heals this November sixteenth through nineteenth. The tour extends from California, goes across the country, and ends in Derrick County, only six weeks away. Okay. Just like the Vietnam Veteran Memorial in Washington, D.C., there are more than fifty-eight thousand names on The Wall That Heals. The Wall That Heals is a three-quarter scale replica of the actual wall. The tractor trailer, excuse me, the tractor trailer carries The Wall That Heals. Once it is unloaded, turns into the Education Center. It features a timeline and artifacts from the Vietnam War. One of the features it offers is the Wall of Heroes, which are local veterans who died during the war, as well as the In Memory, which highlights local veterans who served in Vietnam and passed away after they returned, no matter what the cause. The wall is inclusive to honor all Vietnam veterans. We feel it's important to bring The Wall That Heals to Derrick County, since our county, as well as the surrounding counties, are home to several thousand veterans, including those that served in Vietnam. We feel it's important to educate younger generations by teaching them the history and the sacrifices made by those who served in the Vietnam War. Groups will be guided through the tours by the VVMF staff, as well as Barry Holt, our resident Vietnam veteran. They run approximately forty to forty-five minutes, followed by a Q. And A. session. There will also be an information education tent that will allow visitors to be able to find names of family members or friends who they may have lost, and a volunteer will be able to show them how to create a rubbing of their name. The wall arrives via escort. The wall arrives via escort on Tuesday, November 14th. The ETA is 3:00 PM at the Soundside Event Site. It will leave Columbia at 1:45 and begin its journey to Naggs Head. The escort will turn and go through Mann's Harbor, Manio, and then make the left to go over to the Soundside Event Site. Dorothy Hester is arranged to have a tracker to put on the escort so people can follow the journey live and go outside to see as it passes, rather than just stand and wait for it. They can actually follow the timeline. The council will be distributing American flags at the seafood festival in hopes people will stop by and pick one up to wave as the escort passes by. The setup for the wall is Wednesday, November 15th until approximately 2:00 PM, and once that's completed, the wall is open 24 hours until Sunday, November 19th at 2:00 PM. Thanks to the help of our Public Relations Department, The Wall That Heals has a dedicated website so people can learn about the wall, as well as get information for the event. There's a tab exclusively set up for tours. Yeah, this is another video.
The Wall That Heals, a 375-foot-long replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington DC, along with its mobile education center, is coming to Dare County this November. This free exhibit honors the more than 3 million Americans who served during the Vietnam War and will be on display from November 16th to 19th at the Soundside Event Site in Naggs Head. For more information and to find ways you can volunteer, donate, or become a sponsor, visit darenc.gov/wall.
That's actually the ad we had running in the movie theater this summer. So thanks to the help of, um, I told you all that, I'm sorry. In addition to our Veterans Advisory Council, we have a dedicated committee who have worked diligently.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County.
Commissioner Woodard. We have several volunteers, including Wally Overman, Lisa Lloyd, Marie Ruggero, Barry Holt, and Terry Gray, some of which were able to be here today to support us. We're hoping to honor these veterans and give them the respect they deserve, which many men, many did not receive when they returned home by certainly, after serving our country. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Sullivan, do you need volunteers to help set up and break down?
We actually did have a sign-up genius, but we've got everybody now. We have plenty of volunteers, but we'd still, if you'd like to come and help out, we sure welcome you, because a lot of people, and we're hoping they're excited and want to participate.
Activity bus, take those kids there. Okay.
Okay. If you want, I do have business cards I could leave on the table. If anybody has any questions, they can reach out to me.
And just on the ad, uh, reach out to Patty as, as the schools want to put together groups. If you're interested in doing that, uh, kind of schedule that through Patty and, and we'll get you. We'll get it done. As much as, as we can do ahead of time would be great, to know what to expect. But, uh, the tours are supposed to be really good. The folks that take the groups through are very knowledgeable and, and get into quite a bit of detail about it, so.
The web, the website does have a tour button on it, and it's sign-up genius, so you can just go in and say, as well, if you're comfortable with computers, so.
And thank you for your hard work. I'm sure this was a lot cumbersome to put together. I know it's a lot of hard work to organize that kind of thing.
It's coming to fruition.
I'm sure there's a lot of people in eastern North Carolina are going to be very excited, so, yeah.
It's my pleasure. I'm glad we were able to make it happen.
And Patty, I want to, Patty, I want to piggyback on what Mary Alon said. You and I saw each other a couple of times this summer, and you were working hard. So, once again, hats off, and thank you so much.
Thank you, and I hope you guys come in for, bring the kids in for tourism. I'm really excited.
I truly believe this is a great learning experience for students, and I know my dad, um, he goes up there every five years and rubs his name on the wall. And it's, uh, it's emotional. It's emotional.
It is. That, that's why it's open 24 hours, so if people can't go there during the day and don't want to be around the crowds, and that's why they have it 24 hours. So they can go when it's quiet and no one's around.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us present.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. However, there are no topics listed for discussion this evening, so we'll move on to new business, and I'll turn the meeting over to Board Attorney Rachel Hitch for presenting the first reading of proposed policy manual updates.
His idea was to have the attorney follow that. So we have some policy updates for you all. This will be, there'll be a string of policy updates, I think, and regulations that are related to the Parent Bill of Rights. Um, the implementation has been postponed a little bit, so that's going to allow us to, to take the time that it takes to go through your policy manual, reconcile what you already had, a lot of what you were already doing, and reconcile that with what you'll be required to do. And so this is our first set of those for you. It's Policy 1310 and 4002 on parental involvement. And the School Board Association has done a great job of trying to get ahead of some of those things and send that out, and then we put our own thoughts on some of the things that we would advise that you all do. So that's the policy. And then there's also a regulation, and this is the first reading of the proposed policy updates, so y'all don't have to take any action at this time, and since the heat has been taken off on the implementation date, you have the time to kind of stew on this a little bit and make sure it covers everything that you want it to.
And we, we had been discussing the groups, um, like our non-curricular and curricular groups, and that's been coming up the last couple of months. So that Bill of Rights, as I understand, has some additional regulations, so we're in a kind of a holding pattern on how. Can you just touch on that for just a minute?
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. So one of the things that the Parents' Bill of Rights talks about, it, it, it helps us to try to divide or gives parents information about the clubs that are available at each school and how they're arranged. And we were already working on that for you, but we want to make sure that whatever we do is comprehensive. So we're kind of rolling that, those requirements into the, those club policies that we're reviewing for you right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Ms. Hitch? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Ian Adams, Director of Facilities for Dare County Schools, in regards to proposals for air quality testing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board, Ms. Bassnight. Rachel, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was hoping I wasn't next after that. Was it last month, I believe, or the month before, we discussed about getting indoor air quality, continuing indoor air quality tests for all Dare County schools. Uh, after putting RFPs out, three proposals were secured. Reoccurring tests will allow the district to maintain quantifiable data pertaining to safe and habitable, habitable working and learning environments for our teachers, staff, and students. The RFP put out, requested this to be done twice a year, as we discussed earlier. When we do that, it will be a random sampling of all buildings. The number of samples will vary based on square footage of the building, ranges anywhere from 13 samples in our smaller, smaller schools to 24 samples in some of our larger schools. Those samples will do the random air, temperature, humidity, CO2, CO, and outdoor air quality as a baseline for the test. Proposals are received for, from ECS at $29,800, LRC at $32,220, and ETA at $76,000 even. With that, as, uh, myself and the superintendent had a nice long discussion this morning about the best way to go, and the superintendent recommends the board approve the proposal submitted by LRC Indoor Testing and Research Incorporated, based out of Cary, North Carolina, in order to complete the indoor air quality for all DCS schools.
Any questions?
Yes, you say all facilities? That means maintenance and transportation?
We did not include that in the initial. Uh, with those not being climate controlled, uh, this is.
I'm just saying, when you say all facilities, that is part of our facilities.
All DCS schools.
Okay, just the schools, not facilities.
Is this the same company that did the initial?
They are one of the two companies that did the initial.
And I just wanted to bring up that in the past, when we done this back in the mid 2000s, all the facilities were done, and we had to put a ventilated system in the transportation department because of carbon dioxide and things like that. So it might be worth us doing all of our facilities instead of just the schools. Just want to throw that, I mean, we, we did have to put that, we had to put that device in there because of, um, air quality issues with carbon dioxide and other things, so.
Absolutely willing to expand this. Um, you, you, the, the board asked me about doing air quality in the schools, and that's, that's the proposal we put out. But, uh, we're happy to discuss that. Um, obviously, I think it probably would increase the cost slightly, but, um, I, I still, still think we're okay.
I think it's, it, it, it would help us in the future for other issues.
Absolutely. I think the costs would be rather nominal based on the square footage of.
Right.
Rachel, is this something that we could approve this contract tonight to go ahead with the schools and then ask for a request, a proposal to include that and just add that on at the next meeting?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
If that worked, does that work, Ian, for your name?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll make a motion. We'll do that.
Was LRC chosen because of, I guess, some sort of expertise over ECS?
Yep. So our board policy, North Carolina General Statute, they all say the same thing. Of course, we copied, uh, the General Statute in our board policy. I'll read it word for word because I was prepared for that question. "The award of a better contractor will be made to the lowest responsible bidder who can provide the product with quality and performance standards needed within the time specified in the contract." If you get into the General Statute, it's even more in-depth than that, but I focused our discussion on quality, uh, and quantifiable data. ECS, ETA are great companies, uh, North Carolina-based offices. LRC just has the quantity that we were looking for. Like I wrote on my little script here, so I wouldn't get too far off track, uh, we have the highest quality expectations for our schools, our students, and our staff, and anyone that enters our facilities. And from prior working experience with LRC and numerous client references, we feel that they share our pursuit of maintaining the highest quality possible.
Sorry.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Ian.
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, that was presented with adding an addendum to, uh, the Maintenance Facility and Transportation Department in the future for, um, air quality testing.
Mr. Twitty's made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ballance, second it. Is there any further discussion? Here or none, a call for a vote.
Mr. Chair, before you do, did that include Central Office?
It did not.
If, if, if we're going to do maintenance and transportation, let's do all Dare County schools facilities.
Yeah, because that's, that's what got me confused, and I apologize, Ian, when it says all facilities.
All, all Dare County schools. Facilities, indoor facilities.
I'll make a motion that we approve this tonight with the addend, with the request addendum to all Dare County schools facility, which would be left out, would be Central Office, Maintenance, and Transportation.
Have a motion by Mr. Twitty. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ballance, second it. Any further discussion? Here or none, a call for a vote. Those in favor of approving the contract as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of buildings in Dare County.
Yes, yes, they are.
There is what? 11 schools, Central Office, and Transportation?
And this concludes the business portion of the meeting. I'd like to open the floor for comments from the board and our student advisors. Mr. Twitty.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Bassnight shared with us earlier today about the Principal Cafeteria and Custodian, uh, week and month, and, you know, I have to say, we had the best. Uh, I see them work every day. Um, when I go through the buildings, it's periodically throughout the month, and, uh, I think back in July, August, we represented or recognized First Flight High School on behalf of the hard work they did without any air conditioning. And that's just one of our schools. All of them would do the same thing, you know? Our cafeteria staff is unbelievable, um, with the hard work that they have to do in the circumstance, and I just appreciate, you know, everything they do for us. And it makes the schools, look at the three students there. They're, they're happy, and they like their facility that they're being educated in, so that's, that's awesome. And then, you know, the, um, presentation of The Wall That Heals is awesome. I'm glad, I'm glad to see that the work that came through for, for that to be honored here in Dare County out of 100. And we were 32 out of 100, so like I told Mr. Bassnight earlier, sign me up. I'd be glad to drive that activity bus, take those students to staff to see, because I'll, I'll certainly be there to see it, because it's, it's remarkable. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Twitty. Ms. Ballance?
I think Isabella wants to drive one of the buses. She seemed very eager when she was, she's about to come out of her seat.
My grandmother used to drive a bus.
She did?
Gail used to drive a bus for me years ago.
Actually, I, first off, I, I want to apologize for that phone call, because that has never happened in the eight years I've been on this board. I've never gotten a call from him in the middle of a meeting. But now, it's, I'm really excited to see the wall thing happen. That's great, and also, um, just to get that, the air, including, that was a good catch. We should include Central Office as well. I mean, you guys are part of us, you know? Just excited to see this, the direction, the beginning of the school, and everybody's just did work so hard to get things to come together. The, um, can't wait to see what happens with the early college thing happening, that application was submitted, and just really good stuff happening, so. Onward and upward.
Mr. Walker?
I just ditto on everything that's been said so far.
Ms. Bothwell?
Yeah, um, I agree, kind of, I don't want to just keep repeating myself. I did, um, go to the Culture Day at Key Hawk Elementary School. I was so blown away. Those, I, I did the kindergarten class, and oh my God, these kids were singing in Spanish and dancing the moranga and doing all sorts of fun stuff. It was just a really cool thing to do. And welcome again, girls.
Mr. Woody?
Good job on your presentations today. They were good. Uh, it's very informative information that, you know, I think it's great for everybody to hear, not just us, but those that are watching and listening, so, um, thanks again, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Brower?
Yeah, um, I happened to be at the Duck Jazz Festival on Sunday and happened to see the First Flight High School, Honors Jazz Band perform there. They were exceptional, and my hats off to Mr. Ebert for teaching those kids to behave professionally and really to play lights out and giving them, giving them the room they need to do that.
Student Board Members?
First, in honor of, um, National Principal Month, I just want to give a shout out to all of First Flight School System Principals, and specifically First Flight High School's Principal, Mr. Lansing. He, we are so appreciative of everything he does, and we all just are so appreciative to have him. And same with all the First Flight Custodians, all the cafeteria workers. They work so hard, and it shows, and we love all of them. Also, I want to give a quick shout out to First Flight Volleyball Team. Last week at our Dig Pink Event on Thursday, we were able to donate over $1,000 to breast cancer causes from our shirt fundraisers, which is amazing, so I'm really proud of that. And last, as a military child myself, I'm also super thrilled about The Wall That Heals. I think it's an awesome opportunity, and I'm super glad that it's coming to Dare County for some more military exposure here. So, yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hi again. I second Anna on, um, everything she said about our custodians and everything. I love the custodians at my school. I always have, um, and they do a really great job. Um, also, our principal, love Mr. Luciano, so really grateful for him. I wanted to give a quick shout out to our fall athletes. Um, we've got a lot going on at Manuel High School with fall athletes. Kelly Cook is a junior on the volleyball team, and she got her 500 high school kills, which is pretty incredible for being a junior on varsity. Um, we also had, we won the Marlin Bowl on September 21st for the second year in a row against First Flight. That was pretty exciting at our school. And then lastly, our girls cross-country team has won two invitationals. And then lastly, our girls' cross-country team has won two invitationals as a team already this season, and they have also placed first in 2A at every conference meet so far this season. So that's pretty cool, and we have some really great cross-country runners, so just wanted to recognize them. Thank you, guys.
I was not planning on saying anything, but I am not going to stay quiet. I-
This kind of presentation patters me.
I also agree with everything they said, especially with the principal part. Ms. Rooks works so hard. She actually attended our competition, but the Alligator Bridge stopped working as soon as our bus passed, so she was late, and my parents were late, and everyone's parents were late. And our two soloists got to the competition 20 minutes before we were performing, so, but we still placed first place, and no one would guess that we placed first place, so. Yeah, and also, I am, I hope I get the chance to go see the Wall That Heals. It's very amazing that that is coming to Dare County. I hope, honestly, I hope that our whole school goes, because it is so amazing. Hearing her talk about it almost made me tear up, but I'm also a very sensitive person, so, but thank you, guys.
Thank you. And I'd like to say ditto to everything everybody said, but there are some things that the students said. I liked the band in first place, and first place, and first place, and first place, and first place. That was awesome. And Mr. Bassnight, I know as a school administrator, you and I both had a pie in the face. Have you? I know I have. So hats off to the folks that got the pie in the face. Been there, done that one. So, anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Board members, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
For having them-
Oh, yeah.
-join these meetings. It adds a lot, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Bassnight. Have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all.